Let's get this party started. Yeah, I think we'll be okay as long as we have a quorum. So. We do call to order the City of Montgomery Planning and Zoning Meeting for January 5th, 2001, or 2021. Time is 6:10. And I'd like to just say a big welcome to Allison Clark, our newest member. She is on board and she is here tonight. Hello, Allison. Is she unmuted?
I'm asking her to unmute.
Uh oh, it's just me and you, Jeff.
Well, I know, I saw Allison's picture.
Yeah, she's here. I just can't, it's not letting me go through, ask to unmute. Okay.
Now, her name is in the square, but I don't see her picture, so.
Yeah, there she is. Okay. She's unmuted now. There we go.
All right.
Great, okay.
We have had some internet issues of late.
Okay, well, good to see you here, Allison. I don't know if you heard, but we just officially started the meeting. And first, just wanted to welcome you and we thank you for your time. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I've mentioned this in the last couple of meetings. I always remind the new people that we really appreciate y'all whenever you're talking to any businesses or anybody, encouraging them to actually show up when we do have the real meetings or Zoom when we have to do the Zoom. Because it really does help a lot. It gets those people engaged. It helps a lot with the back and forth questions and answers. So I just wanted to mention that. Again, we can, it's always good to encourage good communication with whoever's on the agenda. So if they can make it, we appreciate that. And let's move on. The first item is the Visitor Citizens Forum. Dave, is there anyone who would like to speak at this time?
There's not. Ms. Bales, if I'm saying that right, is on the line for the first item or the first action item after the minute, so.
Okay, great. Okay. Very good. So we're moving on to the first item on the agenda. And that is consideration and possible action regarding the regular meeting minutes of December 1st, 2020.
I move to accept or approve those meeting minutes from December 2020.
Very good. And Allison, since you weren't actually at that one and weren't officially a member, I know you can't, I'll do a second on that since you can't do it. So I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's no opposition. Very good. Thank you. Item number two. Consideration and possible action regarding a proposed outdoor playground for Living Savior Lutheran Church located at 309 Pond Street in Historic Preservation District. And now, Dave, you said there is, was it Cheryl that wants to speak at this time?
Right, and I'll just give a brief introduction. So you have in your packet what they are planning. And I've spoken with them a little bit about it. But we have someone here from the Living Savior Lutheran Church to kind of give you an overview and answer any questions that you guys have.
Right. And by the way, we appreciate all the, what you've sent us already. It really helps us with the visual part. That was well done.
Yeah, so, yes, I'm Cheryl Bales. And so I guess if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Hi, Cheryl. Can you tell me, is this basically in the same location as the other playground that's out there?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Oh, is the location of this playground approximate to where the existing place that is out there?
Yeah, so the existing is basically between the two churches, between the Fellowship Hall and the Old Baptist Church. And this one will be basically directly behind the Fellowship Hall. So I don't know if you remember, we've got a new garage. And so it's between the garage and where the Fellowship Hall is. So you will not be able to see it on Pond Street. And you really won't be able to see it on Caroline Street either because the garage be blocking it and the Fellowship Hall will be blocking it. So the only place you'll really be able to see it, and I'm not very familiar with these roads because I don't, I just drive on them. I don't know the road names, sorry. The one that comes off of where the Funky Monkey used to be, what street is that? Yeah, so that, that street, that's the only street coming down that you would probably be able to see it.
Right. Yes, and Brittany, I have the same question. So now, is the existing one now going to just go away? Or are you going to also have that one?
No, it's, it needs to go away. It's, it has seen its day. We've been trying to repair it as much as we can. But part of the reason we haven't done anything with it yet is just because of looking at the garage and the other stuff that we've been doing with the sanctuary and everything. So kind of one, one step at a time.
Well, that's great. It looks like a natural progression because the existing one, you're limited on space there. And this new one, by the way, we, you know, you were there, I think. When we approved the garage, that was, again, very well presented to us and it really came out well. And as you say, this will be directly behind that and really pretty much in its own little area there where it's not that visible. It's not close to the street, which is, which is nice.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And we are planning on putting a fence around it too. It's a black fence, so it's gonna really go well with the fence that's around the Peels Cemetery too. It's not a wrought iron fence like that, but it's, will kind of fit in very well with what they have already.
Yes. I was a little confused where it said three foot and then it said 54 inch by 54 inch and the gates are going to be four foot.
That's not an inch, sorry, the 54.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, the overall dimensions, I think, is what she's saying there. The whole fence is 54.
Okay, great, okay, yeah. Well, really, it looks like good quality. And also, I was impressed with the material, the playground equipment with that vinyl coating. It looks like it'll hold up really well in the weather and, you know, this Texas sun.
Yeah.
It looks like high quality.
Yeah, and it's also, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's actually Amish made. So the swing set itself is, is made by the Amish and then they actually just wrap it in the vinyl. So you know it's well made.
Yeah, wow, great. Sounds good. And it looks like the soft material, everything's to code with the soft rubber material for a landing spot for the kiddos.
Yes, it'll, it'll have a three inch depth, which is what is up to code so that if somebody fell or whatnot, it's much, much softer than gravel or even just regular mulch because it will be the rubberized mulch, which doesn't have as much maintenance involved in it either.
Right, you've really thought it through. Well, let me just say, this is another good example of what we were just talking about. It's so nice to have a member here as yourself that really can give us the details. Sometimes we don't always know until we really have that discussion, so appreciate it.
Sure.
Any more questions?
No, I just wanted to say that I like the product and I appreciate the safety features that you guys have added to it.
Thank you, yes. We're, one of the things that we've debated on doing too is this company has a wheelchair access swing that allows for that. And so we're, that's not in the plan right now, but in the future, we are hoping to be able to put something like that because I checked with the school district and there's really no playground in the area, even with the school that has a playground that is wheelchair accessible for a swing. And so we are looking at possibly adding that in the near future. But, but it can, what happens is basically one of the swings comes down and then that can just go up. So it's something you can put up and then take it down. So if there's someone, we currently don't have anybody in our congregation that is handicapped, that is a child that would want to be on it. But we do have other people that we have some relationships with that we're looking at maybe doing that.
Sounds great. Yeah, I think that's going to be such a nice feature for y'all to have there.
Yes.
And we know it'll get a lot of use.
Yes, our old one does. And so it's like, okay, we need to, we definitely need to upgrade this, so.
Well, good, thank you. Again, nice to see you, something positive happening. This has been a tough year. It's good, good to see that.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, considering that, I will make a motion to approve the proposed outdoor playground for Living Savior Lutheran Church located at 309 Pond Street in the Houston Preservation District, or the Historic Preservation District, I apologize.
Fine. Wait, can we get a second on that?
See Allison's name here, but.
I'll second it.
Very nice. We get a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? There's no noes, the motion passes. And again, thank you so much, Cheryl, for coming and being here.
Well, thank you for all you guys do. I know that with everything that's happening in Big Town of Montgomery, you, you guys are kept busy, so thank you for your service.
Great. And of course, you're welcome to stay on. You might learn a few more things about, this is not going to be, we've only got a couple more items. So if you're not too busy.
Yeah, no, I'll stick around.
Okay, great. Say hi to Mike Newman for me.
All right, I will.
All right, next on the agenda is consideration and possible action regarding temporary banners and signs in the Historic Preservation District.
Members of the commission, and as a benefit to Allison, who was not at the December meeting because she was not yet on the PMZ. We talked briefly in December about some of the temporary banners and kind of the proliferation of them, you know, in, you know, primarily the downtown area where you have these smaller type businesses. The sign ordinance doesn't allow for temporary banners and the Historic Preservation District does require that any exterior modifications be brought before the PMZ for approval. I've shown some examples of some of the signs and banners that are currently in downtown that are not approved. The city has, just as a matter of, you know, practice this year with the pandemic, been a little more relaxed on some of the now open things because we don't want to, you know, do anything that gets in the way of business. We want to protect what we have, certainly downtown. And at the same time, you know, be mindful that, you know, a temporary banner is just that, it's temporary. But, you know, we're trying to balance, you know, the idea of, you know, keeping the integrity of the historic district, but at the same time, bringing these folks into compliance. So these, you know, by no means are the only ones, just ones that, you know, either, you know, I know that Jeff has bought up the Dominion Pool Group signs in the past and, you know, along with some of the other ones. And, you know, as a reminder, what the, what the sign ordinance allows for, say, in the packet there, I showed the best donuts. Typically, the, or actually, the ordinance only allows those types of banners for 30 days. And again, you know, like I mentioned, you know, the city's been a little bit, you know, more relaxed on enforcing that because, you know, right now, you know, with businesses trying to get folks in their doors, we didn't want to do something, you know, to, that would have a detrimental effect on them. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys and, you know, be happy to, you know, answer any questions or talk through any ideas that you have on what you may or may not want to see, you know, whether it's a modification to the ordinance. Again, like I mentioned last month, being able, you know, just more of a staff action, you know, whether or not the PMZ just wants staff to kind of step up, you know, the enforcement of these or, you know, connecting with the businesses. But that said, it's back over to you guys.
Thank you, Dave. And let me just mention that we really appreciate you putting this together this, in the way you did because I think it really helps us understand that there are a couple of parts to this. It's, it's not a real fast, simple kind of a thing. It's something that we really need to make sure we have good communication. Of course, trying to have a good relation with the businesses. I guess what I'm trying to say is that the timing seems really ripe for this with the comprehensive city plan coming as we move forward with a comprehensive plan. I would ask you if we can maybe somehow maybe work this in with that. And as we're discussing this tonight, maybe what are the, you know, what are the best ways you think we should contact those business owners to kind of let them know maybe what's coming down the road? And, you know, I think you brought this out in that we want, we definitely want the impression that we're working with, and this is really for their best interest in the long run too. It really helps everybody if we have a cohesive kind of a plan where, you know, we know how far we go. But it, but it's, there are parts to it that are a little bit difficult because there's some businesses that have been here a long time. And once they start really looking around and, and it's okay, we can mention names. I mean, Yomama's, it's, I never really, it almost seemed like that was okay there because it kind of fit the barbecue place. But, you know, I think what this, what really started this was the banners that are not attached to a building, especially when they're, when they're just loose or planted in the ground and they're so temporary looking, I think that's part of it. So my point is, we may, we need to have a good discussion about it and there may be some steps to it. It may take, you know, six months to a year. It might take a while. But that's what we can discuss. But I appreciate you putting this together in such a way where we look at both sides of it.
And, you know, just to dovetail into your thought there real quick, I'll, you know, we'll say that to your point about the downtown design project and kind of what that's going to bring, you know, there'll be a lot of changes, you know, aesthetically downtown. And, you know, you're right, you know, kind of as that process evolves and develops and that may be the segue into communicating, you know, with some of these businesses to let them know about the, you know, the work that is, you know, just started and, you know, kind of be able to not, you know, show up and say, you know, you've got, you know, 48 hours to take this thing down or, you know, we're going to be back and we're not going to be happy. But, you know, kind of, you know, you know, work hand in hand and walk side by side with those businesses to raise that standard as opposed to, you know, and just a black and white enforcement of it that, you know, again, you know, some of them, like you mentioned, you know, with Yomama's barbecue, would be very difficult because I think they've had the same, you know, it's, it's not the same banner that they've had, but they've had the same, you know, the same design banner. I think since I've, you know, have lived here since, you know, in the early 2000s, so.
Would you guys, as a newbie, are temp signs like that used? You know, as in the sake of Yomama's, it sounds like those are used as semi-permanent whenever temp signs are really potentially considered usable between permanent signage, you know? So I'm curious about that. And, you know, in reviewing this agenda, I don't know what the purpose of the coffee flags are for when in a historic district. How do they relate? And campaign signs, you know, that I have questions about that in terms of why would we relax rules regarding, you know, I mean, aren't campaign signs included in temporary signage?
They are not. That was a point that we had clarified with our city attorney. And campaign signs will be one thing or, you know, one of the handful of things that a city cannot by law regulate. So in effect, you know, in the wording in our ordinance that describes the, you know, the political signs, you know, they can't be larger than 36 feet and the other shit, or 36 square feet, that is an exact, you know, mirror of what the state law allows. But we did reach out to our city attorney. I think either last week or the week before to inquire about that. And they told us that, you know, that there's, you know, when it comes to a campaign sign, even, even for a, even for an election that is over, that cities do not have the ability to regulate those.
Okay, so when do those signs come down? They're not, they're not a permanent signage, you know, when the campaign's over. So when do those signs come down in city limits?
If they're on private property, they are, they can be up as long as the property owner, you know, wants them there. I can't speak to HOA rules or deed restrictions or things like that. My guess is they're probably just about as limited because it does come down to a freedom of speech thing. That's, that's what the court's going to look at. And so the guidance, again, from the attorney was if it's a sign on private property that's, that is in any way political, it's not something that the city can, you know, can require to come down. You know, my own sense is probably the best, you know, move is, you know, in, you know, kind of a similar vein on some of these, you know, temporary banners and things like that is to work with the property owner to, you know, to, to find a solution for it to come down. But again, you have to stop short of saying you have to take that sign down because that's not something that we have the authority to do.
Okay, I was also concerned about the height of the coffee flags and their overall look and keeping with, actually don't seem to be in keeping with historic district. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't see, I'm, I'm from the town of Barney, Texas that has been probably one of the largest small town growing, growing towns in the United States. And they don't have any, none of the small towns that I've observed on historic districts in Texas have I ever seen flags, coffee flags like that. And I don't think they're, are they on coffee shop property?
Right, or the, you know, so I'll show all of my cards here. When I left them on her front porch the other morning, they were on her property. But one had fallen, the one near 149 had come down. I think I was walking last week early through downtown and it was just before those storms. And I, you know, had noticed that one was laying down, the one by 149. And rather than it get all stained up from the, you know, the grass and debris and the leaves and stuff on the ground, I went and I set it on her porch. And I also took the other one that was there in the parking sign or, you know, in the parking lot that, you know, kind of, you know, right outside our building and set them there. And again, you know, had explained to her that, you know, the, you know, while the city only allows that, you know, for 30 days to advertise, you know, what the ordinance calls a bona fide event, which is a grand opening of going at a business sale or something like that. You know, we were trying to work with businesses, but, but that, you know, I had taken them down and put them on our porch mainly because I didn't want the one to get messed up. But that, you know, that we were also taking that up as a conversation point. Her thoughts were, well, you know, I just, you know, I really have a hard time, you know, with getting folks to see me. And while we're, you know, while the city's certainly sympathetic to that, at the same time, none of that changed between when they decided to open the business and, you know, today, if that makes sense. It was, you know, the location of the, of the actual structure relative to the traffic on 149 was the same as when they contemplated opening the business as it is today. So I guess I say all that to say, you know, to some degree, visibility is not an excuse for being able to put it up. Again, you know, if a business is, is just opening and advertising, that's one thing. But at some point, it's not just opening anymore.
That's why I asked, you know, is the consideration as to, you know, are we, are we stepping onto the line of permanent signage at this point?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, let me add to Dave, that that's the kind of thing that really does help to get, we consistently look at, every so often, where we know it comes, it changes from temporary to permanent. One example I wanted to give real quick was when the little print shop went in just to the right of Dominion Pool. And they, that was a typical situation, just for y'all that, you know, are kind of new. This is why we do have the, the temporary ones in the beginning because a lot of times they're trying to open a business and they just need something, they want to get something up. But sure enough, they, they had their, it was a soft sign to open up. But then with, I think it was in the 30 to 60 days, they did get their permanent sign up. So we look at that and we say, we see them do that. And so how can we justify somebody just down the way that's, you know, hasn't taken theirs down? And I, and I think that's where, this has just sort of crept in slowly. It's not, it hasn't been a big issue, but it's just something we, we want to try to, you know, go the other way with it. And so I just want to mention that, that that's, that is why we have the 30 day. And back in 2015, the ordinance that, that Dave did include here in our packet has a lot of detail in there. But that was why, back then, we did that and it did, it did help a lot.
Can I add, you know, so my plan is to, along with the examples here that are included in your packet, you know, you know, some, like the Six Shooter Junction business that has just moved in there on Liberty Street. I've been in communication with them, again, about, you know, kind of, you know, to touch base with them on, you know, being able to resubmit their final artwork. And again, you know, explaining to them that, you know, while we're, we are trying to not take a very hard stance against things in terms of, you know, advertising or of, you know, what's inside the business, at the same time, we can't let the banners, you know, stay there indefinitely. So in the instance of that business, I would expect to see them next month, again, from them. And, but again, a lot of it is education, you know, as, as a new business comes in, you know, you start the learning curve all over of, you know, well, I didn't realize that you had a sign ordinance. What do I need to do? I didn't realize that the historic district meant that I needed to get that approved or this approved. So a lot of it is just the educational aspect of, you know, that a lot of times can feel, you know, like a broken record in a sense that, you know, we're saying the same things over and over. But it's just a part of it. It's, you know, you know, being able to educate folks to let them know what the requirements are so they can then work to be in compliance, so.
Exactly.
One other quick question as a newbie on the board. What is the precedent that has been set or has there been a precedent set? You know, there's advertising that could be considered signage on a food trailer that was parked over there downtown. I saw it yesterday or day before. I believe it's going to be an ice cream trailer or whatever. What, what is the, has that, has all of that been finalized and, you know, Ha- has all of that been finalized and, you know, what kind of precedent does that set for? The other businesses that are in the historical district that have, that have paid for hard signage? Um, you know, they've got a food trailer next to them now with, with signage that really is not historical per se. Um, so I'm trying to understand, is there a precedent that's set, um, that would be in? Against the existing business owners and their signage that we need to keep in mind? There's no other food trailer in town, so that's why I'm asking.
Sure, sure, um, and, you know, I, I think, you know, the, you know, to answer the precedent, you know, piece of it, um, you know? Every piece of advice that I've, you know, received, you know, from city attorneys over the years and doing this and being involved with the city is, you know, a city never truly sets a precedent. Because they're able to judge each one individually, um, you know, as you mentioned, this is the very first, you know, kind of, you know? Uh, uh, you know, food, uh, trailer that we've had, um, in the city. Uh, specifically to that one, that one did run through the P and Z, both in terms of the site plan and then, uh, the graphics of the trailer itself. Um, you know, to me, I, I think one of the things that, you know, that I think that I would like to get the attorney's, uh, clarification on is? Kind of, you know, because our historic district in the way it's written, so we've got the historic preservation ordinance, which is based on design guidelines. The design guidelines were never adopted. So we're made, that said, the design guidelines say that any structure built between, and, you know, again, the entire ordinance is written around. You know, permanent structures being built, I mean, there's really nothing in the historic, you know, ordinance that, that even contemplates, you know, kind of a mobile. You know, establishment or anything, it talked about the architectural detailing of structures and, you know, structures that were built between, I believe it's like eighteen fifty and nineteen forty. Which is an incredibly broad, um, you know, brush in terms of architectural style. And this, you know, the city, it has a bit of a Victorian feel in a lot of things, but at the same time, it's really, you know? At the same time, you know, really not, you know, I, I mean, you know, you, you look at any of the older buildings on, you know, Liberty Street, you know, those aren't, you know, necessarily. You know, a Victorian feel, there's certainly a lot of very, very, you know, wonderful examples of that style of architecture in the residential areas. Um, of the city or of the historic district, but in terms of the commercial, you know, side of it, you know, the reality is that, you know, the buildings that, that are here with, you know, perhaps one exception. That are in the historic district are generally all newer than nineteen fifty and really, you know, you take, you know, again, back to the Six Shooter Junction one, there's really nothing. You know, per se, that's, that's, you know, um, historical about the building itself or about the architecture of the building. It, you know, the, uh, some of the parapet walls up top kind of have that old west, you know, style again, you know, to them. But, um, but when you get into, when you, when, when you begin looking at signs, there is a fine line and, and again, this is where I want the guidance, uh, uh, from the attorney. Is when you start talking about signage, it's, well, does a business have to rebrand itself? To an old west town in terms of the identity of the business and the branding of the business? To be in the historic district and then is that the city driving what type of business it is versus the business itself? You know, the cohesiveness and again, it's a broad brush, but the, the, uh, cohesiveness with the historic district? Is really kind of what you guys are weighing, um, becau- in, in absence of any better, you know, any better guidance, I think, in the ordinance.
I was also wondering in terms of the, the, the aspect of a food trailer. Um, you know, I, it's unknown to me if this is the permanent or a mobile business and it's also unknown to me. If this is a mobile sign or a permanent sign, you know, it appears to be vinyl wrapped, it can be changed at any given time. So, you know, that's why I'm trying to understand, um, is this, you know, permanent signage? Is this mobile signage? Is this temporary signage? Is this grand opening signage that's gonna change later? You know, there, there's, there's a lot of questions that if we're gonna, if we're gonna paint? A limitation on a business and their signage that's adjacent in that, you know, in adjacent areas of the historical district. It seems to me that this is a really, uh, undefined, uh. It, it, it presents a lot of questions to me as to, you know, what, what, um, we want, we want to be fair? In terms of our businesses, but we also want to be equitable in terms of what we're asking them to do. Um, permanent and temporary, um, in terms of signage in the top of business and the intention? Of parking a trailer in the middle of downtown Montgomery in a historical district, so? I was a little concerned about that, um, and that's why I was asking, you know, as a newbie, can you guys bring, give me up to speed on that?
Sure.
Well, yeah, I can shed some light on that too, uh, uh, we're getting a little off topic here, but I will give you a brief history. Uh. We've had food trailers here in town now for quite a while and, and even in the, on Klepper. Uh, the Maine Lobster, it's done very well and they, they like that location that is within the historic district. Uh, but it, alls I can say is over, I think I know what you're getting at and you. Over the years, we've done a lot of looks at signs and different things and the different buildings. And what the reality is, is we have, if you will, a, an eclectic mix within our city. And we embrace that, we like that. Uh, sure, we love the historic part, but as Dave mentioned, there's very few buildings that are actually historic. And that's fine, and, and we have a mix, we, we, we love the history, uh, especially the historic homes. Uh, and that's a lot of when you talk about historic district, you're talking about the residential homes. But we have quite a mix of buildings in town and many of them were falling apart and built maybe? Built poorly, built in the fifties and sixties, uh, nothing historic about it. So, don't get me wrong, we love history, we love the historic part. But it is, the reality is, it's an eclectic mix. And people like, a lot of people have expressed they like the variety, we, I mean, we have been through, it's went through city council, it went through P and Z twice on the trailer. And there's been a lot of good discussion about it, uh, nobody found anything offensive about the characters. Uh, sure, my first impression personally was it's kind of busy, but we had a good discussion and everything that's on that trailer? Is something that depicts Texas or is wholesome, it's family oriented, uh, so? I'm just mentioning that because there has been a lot of discussion about it and there was a vote, and there was a vote, okay?
Is this a downtown district or is, is there, is this a downtown district, um, you know, with a, I mean, is there a historical designation? Has the city designated it as a historical district and is it? Is it business or is with some residential or is the historical designation strictly for the residential homes? In the area?
Uh, Jeff, it's, it's, the historic district as defined on the zoning map includes both, you know, the residential area to the west of downtown as, as well as the downtown. Roughly over to Prairie Street. You know, I answered kind of the one, you know, follow-up on your question of, you know, well, what if that, you know, trailer changed artwork or, you know, did, well, it would be, you know? Then, you know, we would do the exact same thing that we did, you know, previously, which is, you know, he would submit the graphics for it. You know, get it approved through P and Z or denied through P and Z, but it would have a P and Z action on it, uh, before he would be allowed to change it, so it's. You know, and, and that's the same with a fixed business sign, they couldn't submit, you know, one sign to us. Totally change their, you know, artwork and their sign size and everything else and then say, well, but you already approved my sign, it'd be the exact same. As any other business changing and it's important to note now, if, is, you know, if, uh, you know, we'll, you know, stop picking on the food trailer for a second and say that if, you know, a business sign? Starts to get a little faded, needs to be painted and needs, you know, new, um, advertising copy on it. That's not something that's then regulated by the sign ordinance. Um, and, you know, ordinary, and, you know, same with the historic district, if it's ordinary maintenance, if they're, you know, refreshing an image that is there, that's. Um, already been approved, something like that, you know, would not have to come back, uh, uh, to the P and Z to be approved.
So, um, in the event of vinyl wraps, are those considered permanent or temporary? On, on a, on a mobile? Vehicle?
Just like any other sign, it's a hard sign, so it's permanent.
Okay. So they would need to go through, uh, and, and apply the same process to restore a sign versus change the wrap, right?
Right, right, if he decided that the God Bless Texas was no longer and the Blue Bonnets was no longer something he wanted to do, he wanted to, you know, change it to, you know, the, you know? A few more pictures of an ice cream cone, well, that would be something that, you, uh, you know, to your point, yes, that would need to come back to P and Z.
Okay. So, um. I was just considering that in relation to vinyl signage for Yo Mama's Barbecue or the Dominion Pools. I mean, it, it's basically, you know, can be changed at any given time and that's why I was asking.
Oh, yes, yeah, a lot of the banners as compared to a hard, the best way to think of it is if it's a hard sign, if it's, uh, not, you know, flimsy.
What about, um, a sign on wheels? How is that treated?
Uh, are you talking like the little portable type signs with the letters that you change out, is that what we're?
Yeah, I mean, you know, or, you know, any kind of mobile sign on wheels, how is that treated in relation to? Um, you know, advertising on the side of a trailer? I mean, it, it pertains to, um, it, I think that when we have food vendors that come in as guests for a day. Versus food vendors that are, that own a piece of property and are there day in and day out, that's why I'm trying to understand. Um. And that's why I've, that's why I applied to beyond P and Z is that, um. Is it even application for all the people that are in the historic district that are trying to do business? You know, those that are trying to be visible versus those that, that are placing, you know, a, a mobile unit right in front of everybody else? That affects their visibility, um, so I'm looking at, I'm looking at all aspects of mobile signage? On wheels, whether it be, you know, a temporary sign that's flashing versus a sign that's on a trailer that blocks the view of the other businesses behind it. So.
Yeah, you know, to that point, I mean, he does own the land, whether he put a building there or anything else.
But there are coffee signs there too, and that's why I was asking is sometimes the coffee signs may obstruct his business too.
Did the coffee come back? Again, I think I've mentioned that I had removed those, are they back and maybe I just don't know?
Maybe they are, I, I don't know, I was, I haven't checked today, but it, it is something that, it seems like there's a conflict of, of signage and, you know, temporary versus permanent. And that's why I'm trying to understand, what do we call in permanent and what do we call in historic district? So, I'm trying to understand so that, um, you know?
I, I think that, sorry, I think that last meeting, um, I, I had the same question, I said, you know, is this? A permanent structure or is it a mobile structure, um, I'm from, I have an appraisal background and so anything on wheels technically to me is not considered a part of the real estate, it's more temporary. Um, but, uh, David's spoken with the attorney about it and then it come back to P and Z for approval specifically because it was determined it was. Um, affixed to the property, so a part of the real estate. Um, and so when we were looking at the signage, you know, we're looking at percentage, uh, of signage compared to real estate area, which is basically the land. Um, it wasn't, you know, offensive, I mean, I, the, uh, the gentleman that owns it, you know, is. I, I mean, like, like Dave said, it's his, um, property, he can do with it what he pleases. Um, the trailer itself, uh, when it came through P and Z, you know, we, we saw, you know, it's aesthetically pleasing. It's gonna be a driver of business and activity in the area, there's no, um, ice cream shop, I don't even think in the town of Montgomery, I think you have to drive. You know, beyond April Sound, um, to get to Marble Slab, so. And I think that was more of, of the, the driver, you know, it's cohesive with the, with the attraction of business, um, he owns. You know, that parking lot and so Cozy Grape was okay with it, they got, you know, he got consent from them. I think that's also a driver of business for, um, these food establishments to have, you know, some dessert type thing after. Um, and it, and it makes the, uh, the area more walkable and enjoyable just for family life and I think that outweighed. Um, I guess, uh, I, I, if anybody found, uh, you know, it to be unappealing, um, that was outweighed by the benefit of it to the area.
So could Old Montgomery Steakhouse or Yo Mama's Barbecue, uh, bring in, uh, mobile signage on wheels?
No, because, well, I mean, not from my interpretation, I don't know if Dave has spoken to any attorneys about it, but because those are buildings, you know, and they have a specific, you know? The, the specific parameters in which the signage can be placed on the building itself, um, you know, rules regulating that, so.
You know, a good example would be the, you know, the vehicles that, I don't think they're leasing the space any longer, but there was a tech company called Nazca. That leased a space there at four oh one college, which is, uh, the Kevin Barnes building where, uh, Whitley Winery, um, is. And, you know, I, I'm not aware of any, you know, anyone approaching the city about, you know, kind of, you know, this mobile signage. You know, on the side of the vehicle because it was a vehicle wrap and that brings up a good point is, you know, if Yo Mama's opened a food truck? And they parked their food truck there behind their building, is that considered a sign and, you know, the short answer is? You know, I would defer to, uh, the city attorney on it, you know, the, you know, kind of, his general comment after, you know, looking at the sign ordinance. Um, over the past couple of months, both with the, you know, both with the, uh, uh, with the ice cream trailer? And, uh, the political sign that all seemed to kind of go back to one property candidly. But, um, you know, said, you know, you guys have a very poorly written sign ordinance. So, um, a lot of it is, you know, which is something that I've, you know, is, you know, wasn't necessarily a surprise to me, so? You know, you know, should the city invest resources in, you know, updating ordinances, you know, sign ordinance included? Absolutely, um, the reality is it's, you know, you take one bite at a time and, you know? It's not been a priority in terms of, you know, from the, you know, at least in, in terms of updating those ordinances. You know, quite as much as I would like to see, but, um, when you get down to, you know, years ago, back there on the corner of one forty-nine? And one oh five, that's currently vacant, yeah, it, um, there was a building there, it was an auction house, uh, for antiques and things.
That thing's been there forever, it's been there a long time.
Right, and so the gentleman had a, uh, truck there that he parked in the back that? He, um, had his name on the side, said, um, um, Israel Curtis Auctions. And the, you know, the ruling at the time, that I, you know, really wasn't involved with, but, um, was, you know, the? The city said, well, if you park? You know, near one forty-nine, it becomes a sign, but if you move it twenty feet over, it's not a sign and is that a clear answer? No, not in any shape or form, um, but again, back to the, you know, you, the, you know? A city being able to operate in a sense where it doesn't feel encumbered by setting a precedent. Um, that, you know, is a situation that you deal with on a case-by-case basis because your legal advice is gonna be different on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so semi-permanent versus permanent, um, has that been defined? And also what is, what is to keep a business from dancing between the two? Um, say if I were Yo Mama's owner, I could put wrap, vinyl wrap my? Big white pickup that I park out in front of my business every day with my business, you know, advertising. That would be mobile signage on wheels, just like a, you know, that's why I'm asking, I'm trying to understand. Um, and, and it's, technology is changing and I know that throws the wrench sometimes, so I'm just trying to understand? Where we are with, uh, permanent versus semi-permanent? So I'm just trying to understand where we are with permanent versus semi-permanent in terms of signage?
Sure.
And how we're coming down on these businesses?
Let me just, I understand your point, Allison. Let me just say, I've seen this before with campaign signs, other places. I think that'll just take care of itself. Dave's right, there are certain things about that on private property, you can do so much. We still got a lot of campaign signs out for the president, you know, people still putting out their image. So what are you going to do about it? You know, that's, I think it'll take care of itself. But that's just temporary, so, you know, that's something I don't think we need to waste much time or worry about. As far as the other, we're, we we had a lot of good, just so you know, since you weren't there, we've had lots of good discussions. City Council and P and Z on the trailer, it's, that's, we're blazing new territory. Everybody agreed, you know, agreed that's, it's kind of new, it's a new area, but it's, it's not just a fad. There is more and more of that. We're going to see it in the future. So again, I I guess the best way I can say it is, yes, we all care about the city, but we also know the reality of it is, it is, the best word I can think of, if you will, is an eclectic mix. Doesn't all have to look the same. And there's going to be a little variety, and that's people like that. It's, you know, something a lot of people like, and we are, and we did look at the quality of the product. It's a high quality ice cream, and it's got a good history, goes way back. So we're we're hoping for the best and hope, you know, hope it works.
Understood.
And there was, you know, there's a lot of discussion about it, and there was, there was voting, so.
Did they, did they discuss the permanent versus semi-permanent definition?
Yes, yes, the owner was quite, right from, right from the beginning, it's always been told, it's it's a temporary. It's not, it's not a permanent building, so that's why it's completely unique. You can't compare it to a building. It's, is, you know, any food truck, your advertising is on the food truck, so that's just, that's the way.
So is it going to be connected to utilities?
Oh, yes, yes, he's getting permits for all of that.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay, so getting back to banners and signs, as far as, are there any other questions on that?
I don't have any question. I just, I have a, I guess, a point of interest or discussion point to raise. You know, cracking down on the on the temporary signs, I I've gone into the coffee shop and I had talked to, you know, the the owner, and she was telling me, I mean, unprompted, she didn't know I was on P and Z. She said, you know, those banners have really helped drive traffic to my business. I think that that's something that we really need to consider when we're, you know, going to be cracking down. I understand that, you know, temporary means temporary, and there has to be, you know, some limitations and all of that. At the same time, I think that the way downtown is developed and, you know, the buildings, you know, there's a lot of little offices and spaces, you know, salons and photography studios and stuff you wouldn't know exist but for, you know, signage that's visible on a traffic, in a trafficked area. Perhaps, I don't know if there's a way to display, you know, all the businesses in an area. I know that there's that little walk, I guess, for pedestrian traffic, you know, it tells you all the businesses. It's definitely outdated. But something like that, that, you know, photography studio, there's one over here, there's salon, you know, coffee this way, or something that that helps the businesses thrive, because I think that's been a problem with business retention in that area is, you know, that not, not, that, you know, there are limitations placed, and how do you drive traffic? You have all this traffic on 149, how do you bring people back there? Because that's ultimately what the city wants, you know, they want to, you know, have flourishing businesses and pedestrian traffic and have people enjoy the area. And I think that should definitely be considered when when looking at revising, you know, the sign ordinance and and all of that.
Exactly, and I, and let me add to with that, when we're talking about the comprehensive plan, I think that's where our timing is so good on this, because I think that might have come up, Dave, in the, in some of those plans to have a central information board or something that's visible as you approach to really show what's there.
Right, you know, certainly as the design team that's working on the downtown design project now, as they start to develop, you know, kind of those gateways into the district, one to let you know that you've arrived in a district that's, that's a little bit, you know, more special than, you know, something that's around it. But at the same time, being able to communicate, you know, well, what's in here? You know, to your point, you know, there's a lot of little small businesses here and there. It's just a matter of, you know, you know, letting people know that they're there to stop.
Exactly.
Do we have a kiosk? We do, okay.
It's, we do, but as Brittany mentioned, it's set back pretty far, and it's, it's hard to read, it's very small.
That's not actually, you know, just to point out to you, that's not something that's maintained by the city. I think it was, you know, started out, you know, years ago in in the previous iteration of H and B A. And I think it's, you know, I'm I'm assuming now it's still under H and B A's, you know, purview in terms of, you know, updating the sign and, you know, adding or removing the businesses from. It's not something that the city takes a hand in.
And is the coffee shop open yet?
It is, it's, I think she was closed less, at least when I had reached out to her, she had been out of, she'd been out of the shop, she's a single, you know, owner of business. I think it's, you know, essentially just her, and she had fallen ill. And unfortunately, when you're the only one, and you don't have any employees, she did have to close it down. I don't know if she's back open yet or not. But to answer your question, she was open for a while and then fell ill and had to close up shop for a bit.
Okay, so this has been good discussion, everybody is trying to get up to speed on this too, I know. Excuse me. Just a minute here. This item that we're on right now is for consideration and possible action. I take it, Dave, that if we could send something back that we can be working towards this common goal with city council. I guess, what would you like to see tonight?
Well, if, again, kind of my plan is to, you know, because again, you know, you do need to, you know, be sensitive to the, you know, as we've, you know, all kind of hit on, you know, you do need to be sensitive to the businesses and 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 what they've been going through since the pandemic. And again, it's, you know, there was a high turnover in downtown before the pandemic. So, you know, in, you know, a lot of it is, you know, candidly, just me, you know, going out to communicate with these folks to try and get them to, you know, to voluntarily take these down without, you know, resulting in in the code enforcement, you know, side of things.
Yeah, well, maybe we can, we can all give our comment, and and the best thing I, best way I can say it is that this helps not only the city, but it helps the business owner also, because it does give a good overall look. So maybe the action tonight would be just to try to continue to, if we could somehow put this in with the comprehensive plan as a way to, for you and the staff to have a way, how is it actually going to happen? Through a letter, through email, both, you know, I I don't know how you, how you see that, but it is part of maybe an update to the business owners that this is what we're trying to do.
Right.
So are we talking about writing a sign ordinance into this plan?
We, so we currently have a sign ordinance that would, you know, the the actual text of the ordinance.
In terms of these updates, though, I mean, you know, you said that a city needs a well-defined sign ordinance. Are we updating that technology into this new plan?
So the, I I think I'm not quite following on the, in terms of the plan and the ordinance. The the plan is, you know, kind of, anything that's done with the plan would be, you know, separate. There's, there's not a scope of work that would include, you know, updates to these ordinances. One of the things that I've have been advocating for is what they call a unified development code, which is where a city takes all of its development ordinances, so its subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and, you know, sidewalks, all of its building codes, and rolls those into one, one ordinance where everything related to development and businesses would all be found in one ordinance. That's something that since I've been on staff here, I've been advocating for, and I'm going to continue to do so. It's not a, it's not an inexpensive thing to do, and it's, you know, and it's a whole lot of work. But that said, I, you know, still wholeheartedly believe that it's something that we need, you know, sooner than later. But but to answer your question, no, it's not part of the downtown design project work because any ordinance updates or anything would fall outside of the scope of what they're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I I think it's just, we've got a lot of good stuff in the ordinance, the one from, you know, a few years, a few years back. And it seems like the reality is it's just a matter of reminding people, because I think when they're so busy with their business, and especially when it's new, you know, they're just assuming they can do these things, or maybe they just don't ask. So just what you've done just recently, Dave, helps a lot, just to go talk to that business owner, and if we see a reoccurring problem, it's just a matter of educating that there is, you know, the temporary versus the permanent. So maybe we could look at some kind of, for the next meeting timetable as far as how we look at, you know, making that happen over time.
There's going to be some growing pains in the signage matter in terms of implementing changes of a new, of a new plan, you know. So that's architectural changes, basic frame, you know, in terms of infrastructure construction. So there are going to be issues with signage, temporary and permanent and quote semi-permanent. So, you know, business signage, so that's why, you know, and kiosks and and visibility issues in terms of what these, you know, what this new plan is going to be. So that's why I was asking that question, Dave, is how, you know, have we factored all of that into the plan? Because I'm new and because I have experience in infrastructural construction. So that's why I was asking. And I don't want to make a decision that, you know, and I want to, I want to encourage our businesses, but I want to be, have some long viewpoint as to what's coming. So and be smart about that. Get ahead of it.
Yeah, that's right. And I think what Dave's asking for was just some suggestions as far as tonight. What what can, what suggestions can we give to, for him and his staff to help to implement? And and again, I just, I feel like the timing is right where maybe there's a point we put out something about the comprehensive plan and kind of wrap it all in there where it's, you know, we're saying, okay, we're doing these upgrades and we're doing some infrastructure. We're going to do the parking lot, whatever it is. And somehow, and I'm just, you know, trying to think of the reality of how to, how to put it all, make it all part of the comprehensive upgrading, I guess.
Right. I think if you guys are fine with me, you can, you know, starting with, you know, as an example, you know, some of these ones that are here that are, that are temporary signs that are not permitted, if you'd like me to go ahead and start, you know, reaching out, you know, to some of these businesses, I'd be happy to do it. Because, you know, again, there's half a dozen here. I, you know, I didn't spend hours downtown looking for, you know, for banners, but, you know, a drive-through, you know, turned up these that were pretty easy to, you know, to spot. And, you know, if, I think if we solve, you know, half a dozen of them, well, you know, we've made a lot of headway because then, you know, that just about takes care of the issue at present. But again, back to the, there's a learning curve that's, and there's just a lot of turnover, so it's not something that you do and then you're done, it's, you revisit it and you, you know, just keep making progress.
Yeah, you're taking this.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Miriam, yes.
Sorry about that, technical difficulties, but I'm good now.
All right, hey, Miriam.
I'm here.
Thank you.
My, I wrote some notes down after I read it and everything. I've noticed this as I'm walking around town, that the signage is redundant, repetitive, duplicated. Like, the one building has the sign on the side of the, on the side of it, in front of it, smaller, and then way out far in front of it, then they have their signs that I believe that have passed approval for their permits because they're permanent fixtures on the building. I would just, we talked about this a little bit the last meeting, was to send an email, possibly a letter, just to restate, okay, guys, we're looking into revamping our ordinances at present. These are the, currently, this is what our guidelines are. Please take a look at your buildings and please adhere to the ordinance. Now, if we're going to change it, that letter or email is going to set the precedent that we're fixing to send them another email that states the following has been changed. And then that gives them a 30-day timeframe for these signs that we're looking at. And then we start the ball rolling. In 30 days, we should be able to come up with something, and I'm sure you already have something in mind, what you want to change, because as I was reading the the packet that you gave us. But, I mean, I read in there that the signs aren't supposed to stay on the sidewalk overnight, and you can see that one of them are, there's redundant and duplicate, you know, four lease office space, the name of the business on three different signs, same phone numbers, same, you know, here we are. The only one that I found that was the Old Montgomery Steakhouse, it just had health wanted waitstaff. And I have noticed, because I go there to eat, that that sign comes and goes quite often. The redundant and repetitive vest donuts, they have two signs there that are lit up that say open. And then they have a banner that says now open. And then I believe on the other side, if you walk into the front entrance, there's another banner inside of that. To me, that's repetitive, redundant, overkill. Because they had to get approval for these lighted signs that are inside their window. I understand that they want everyone to know that it's now open, but I think two lit signs should be good enough. And and if it's going to be a 30-day temporary sign, they're well past their 30 days. And as far as the Dominion Pool Group, I noticed this two Sundays ago, and then I noticed it this Sunday. So this, so this is at least 30 days old, the banner hanging there. And we also discussed that while you were, that last meeting, that you were the person that, Dave, you were the person that goes around and you, and you look at the signs and stuff like that. So I'm not quite sure why Dominion Pool Group has redundant repetitive signs in their, in their storefront. So, I mean, I looked this over and I, that was what I took. And I'm not quite sure what the issue is with the back 40 boutique six shooter sign, because they haven't put their permanent sign up yet. And there's something in the ordinance that says they can have that sign into the permanent side cones? So I didn't know what the issue was with that. Anyways, I think that if we send, like, our last meeting, we talked about sending them out, saying, hey, review our ordinances, we're going to revamp, and we'll send that out to you, you've got 30 days to read over these and adjust accordingly. And then, like Jeff said, we'll regroup by the next meeting and have something set in stone. But do we need to have a side meeting to sit down to collect our notes, or do you have all the notes, Dave and Jeff?
So what we would do, and just to clarify in terms of, you know, any sign ordinance update, and, you know, to be, you know, to be clear, that's not something that's on my immediate list of things to do to update that ordinance. Again, that's, that's a, that's. to update that ordinance. Again, that's, that's a, that's a hiring someone to rewrite that ordinance. And that's not been in the budget, especially this year. I take the opinion that I don't, I, I would, I would be disappointed if we, if, if we tried to look at these ordinances as one bite at a time because they're really all the same pie. Again, back to that, you know, unified development ordinance or unified development code. You know, all of these things should really work in concert with each other because what we have now, and, you know, you know, as that makes up our city code, we have a bunch of ordinances that were, you know, developed in and of themselves. And so they, you know, there's, there's portions of the ordinances that are in conflict with one another. And it's, you know, all part of a city growing up. But in terms of, you know, in, if the city adopts a new sign or the city council decides, you know, to, to take the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to, to make changes to the sign ordinance, no one with an existing sign that's permitted today would be required to comply with that new sign ordinance. It would be new stuff after that. But certainly to your point, you know, you know, being in compliance, you know, with what's on the books today, that is a burden that they have to shoulder. But.
But would you agree that, I'm not sure, we discussed this the last meeting also, I was unclear, do we email, do we mail? How do we let these business owners know that, hey, we're, we're, we're going to put you in check? Here's your letter. And if you need us to send you the ordinances, here it is. Just go outside, do a sweep, and we'll come back and check. And, you know, whoever that is, right now, I think you said you were, you go in, step in their business and say, hey, you know, we see that you cleared this up, this still over here, and this is the reason why it doesn't match ordinance. So I just thought last, I thought last meeting that we were going to discuss, and I don't know who has the authority. I didn't know if we wanted city council to send that email or letter out. So, anyway, I think notifying them. I mean, we took the pictures and we all live in the town, so we know how long these signs have been sitting out there.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Like, I drive through every day more than once. So this, the health wanted waitstaff on Montgomery Steakhouse, Old Montgomery Steakhouse, I know they take that down. I know they put it up and down, you know, based on the health that they need. It's not always the sign that's out there. The Fairwater West Mount or the West Mount Building, that is redundant and repetitive. And that's been like that for a little while, longer than 30 days. So anyways.
Well, thank you, Miriam. Those are very good points. And two things, let me just mention on that. The word redundant, I think, is excellent way. Dave, I think that's something for us all to keep in mind when you're addressing this to a business owner. Miriam mentioned that a number of times, and it's, it's very effective. We don't, when they're redundant and repeated over and over again, it's unnecessary. The other thing, and I don't want to take a lot of time with this right now, but be thinking about it, Dave, is does the grandfathering play into this somewhat? I, that can be complicated, but I think of.
You know, so they've been, you know, I feel like, you know, have probably had a sign longer than we've had a sign ordinance.
Right, right. And somehow that just seems to fit that business because it's, it's not loose off the building. I mean, it's on the building and it's been there forever. So, but I mean, we could have a conversation with them, certainly. But there may be certain things that where grandfathering is, is part of the equation. I don't know. But, but I think this will catch on. I mean, really, and the other thing, the only other thing I want to mention on this is that, Dave, the way you've gone about it so far, when you talk to people about, you know, we've been a little lax with the pandemic, and that certainly is an issue. So again, our timing, I think as we come out of the pandemic, is right time to say, hey, you know, we've been a little lax. We've, we've kind of let this go. And it comes and goes. It's been happening for years. But, you know, we do have a, an ordinance that's pretty, pretty much got it all in there. So we just need to try to time it, I think, with the, again, with the comprehensive plan too.
Question. In terms of the sign ordinance itself, if there's, Dave, if there's gaps that need to be addressed and you don't want to hire somebody, you know, per the budget, does this, does the city have an attorney?
We do, we do, we do pay him for his time, you know, to do that. So, you know, whether we were hiring somebody, you know, again, my, you know, I've not asked him explicitly, but my sense and, you know, after a couple of conversations was, is it would be kind of a, you know, a repeal and replace ordinance in terms of our sign ordinance. It's, you know, in, in other words, there's probably not enough there that makes enough sense to save. It, it would, you know, the way cities get ordinances, a lot of times is they go find other ordinances that someone else has written, and then they, you know, modify them to fit, you know, theirs. So, you know, but, yeah, again, you know, we do have a city attorney that would, you know, that would do that. And, you know, far less obviously than if you, you know, were to take the, you know, a comprehensive view of your development ordinances. But if you were looking to plug the hole that was, you know, clearly obvious, then, you know, you're absolutely right. You know, your city attorney would be the one, you know, to do that.
Sounds like a good plan for a workshop.
All right. Good. Any other discussion on this? Because we're, we're going to move on to the next, the next item is fairly similar. So we, we can kind of continue on in a way. But I hope that gives you something, David, to help us look at the timeline on this and how you want to do it.
Absolutely. Let me see if I can solve some of these between now and next meeting. And I will circle back to it informally next meeting, if that's all right with you guys. Just to let you know where we're at on it.
Great. Sounds good. All right. Looking forward to it. Moving on to item number four on the agenda. Consideration and possible action regarding visual enhancements in the historic downtown district.
And this item is brought to you in, in, you know, kind of the same way of just, you know, trying to address just the overall aesthetics downtown. The historic district, you know, doesn't have, you know, right now, anything that, or, you know, our zoning ordinance, you know, doesn't have anything that says, you know, something like your trash can or your air conditioning unit or something must be screened as these new businesses have come, you know, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, that's often a part of, you know, what you guys are looking at and approving. The, you know, a, a good example of that would be the Best Donuts. Their dumpsters located in an enclosure right there, kind of in their drive-through. You know, 10 years ago, people, you know, that's not the way you, that, you know, the site development, you know, happened. There weren't as, you know, certainly, you know, dumpster enclosures, you know, weren't a thing. And, or certainly not to the scale that we've seen. Obviously, the big folks, you know, the bigger developers do, but in a lot of ways, they don't. And I've included, again, some images, you know, for you just to kind of gauge your interest of, you know, trying to pursue some changes to, you know, to some of our, you know, whether it be the historic ordinance or the, you know, or some type of subdivision, you know, code that would, you know, require, you know, some of these businesses in downtown. A lot of it comes down to space. So, but just to get your guys' thoughts on, you know, some of the things downtown, like dumpsters, that you might not like to see. I'd just like to get your thoughts on ideas that you might have to remedy those.
They are an eyesore, especially downtown.
Right.
I mean, are they permanent?
Yes.
You know, sitting in the middle of a parking lot? So.
I would say they're permanent as, you know, you know, to take, you know, kind of the one, you know, really any of these, you know. So any of these that I have included in the packet, including the City of Montgomery's, they're at the community building. I mean, I think those, you know, most of those dumpster locations probably predate all of us.
Can they be covered?
You know. You know, certain they can in terms of, you know, the city being able to say, you need to cover this. That's where.
Enclosed or something.
You know, that's an attorney question. And again, it kind of comes back to, is, you know, early 2021, following a 2020, the time to tell businesses they need to find a, you know, find the money to enclose their, you know, their dumpsters when we don't have anything on the books that says they have to. Certainly, I think everybody agrees that it would benefit every, you know, all of the downtown if, if they were all screened. And that may be a place where the M E D C, you know, has, you know, a, you know, a role in being able to partner with those buildings and say, hey, you know, we can, you know, we can, you know, use our, you know, purchasing power, if you will, and, you know, be able to do, you know, half a dozen of those dumpsters for less than each of the businesses might be able to individually. So through a combination of a, you know, a screen like a fence of some sort and some plantings, then, you know, we might be able to clean up some of that. But.
To encourage them to, you know, to achieve.
Right.
Visual enhancement, yes. That was the description on this, you know. That's what I was asking.
Yep. And I think a lot of this downtown design project, you know, I think when a lot of them start to see, you know, some of the changes in the public spaces that are coming downtown, the, you know, the hope is that they, you know, want to participate in that on their end where things like dumpsters and things like that, you know, get, you know, screened out of view and, you know, put somewhere else.
Absolutely. Dave, it's interesting. You brought up the, kind of the evolution of the dumpster. You know, we can remember back years back, you know, it wasn't, no, they were not, typically were not covered. So we can see why that happened back then. I think we probably all agree, it would be, it's a nice goal to, to get to. One idea I had was you took a picture, I think it was eight dumpsters. One of those dumpsters is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's a responsibility of the city, the one at the community, the old community center.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe one idea would be, I mean, it's a nice place here under the oak trees. Maybe possibly the city staff, the public, maybe the public works guys even. I know they're real handy with, with stuff. Possibly do one there as a, as an example. And maybe we could come up with a unique design just for Montgomery. I'm envisioning maybe, you know, true, good quality treated lumber, four by four posts, and possibly use galvanized metal like the roofing of the old days. Kind of make it a little bit of a unique history to it using the, that, you know, that metal roofing that I've seen it done. It looks great. Or something else. But maybe the city could come up with a little design that the guys could do with that one dumpster, and it might catch on. It might, people, it would help at least to say, you know, this is kind of our, what we're trying to do.
Certainly from a staff perspective, in terms of, you know, trying to communicate this with businesses, it would certainly help us as we go out and ask, you know, businesses to do something if we've, you know, kind of led by example there.
Exactly. Yeah.
I was wondering, I'm looking at these pictures, I looked at them early as well. There's some of them worse than others. But we also have to take into consideration, I'm just throwing this out here, the property that the owner has, the perimeters of, you know, what can be driven on, what can't be driven on, what, you know, waste management can back into or unload, or, you know, how they dump it. You know, there's a lot of, to be, you know, there's a lot to be considered. Because the one that's sitting in the parking lot that the ice cream semi-permanent, you know, ice cream trailer that's going to be coming in there soon, that completely will be an eyesore with all that commotion, with that being there and chairs and people coming and going. And then you've got the dumpster sitting right there. That is an eyesore. And the Burger Fresh, it needs to be replaced. And it need, there's all kinds of, you know, it's rent that parking lot as far as I'm concerned in the back by that building. But can the city, and I see that Sarah's on the phone and you're here too, Dave, but can the city say, hey, put, put some treated lumber and build a little enclosure and you need to cover up your, your dumpster? And then they have to work with Western Waste as to where they can do that and do it where it's financially adding to the property owner and also the property lines. Because the one behind the Montgomery Steakhouse, that's like, if you look, there's a ditch.
Yeah, it's not on their property. It's, it looks to be wholly in the right of way. So, you know, the steak houses is on, on city property, not, not their property.
Inspection services, you know, that's always been sitting there, always. But I mean, if they bring it into the white side of the fence, right now, they're not very busy, right? Nobody's got their trucks there. But if they, if they bring it, can they bring it to the very back of the white fence and build a, build a wooden structure of treated lumber or whatever, or bricks or whatever they want to do? Where, where are we as a city? Is, is that what we can do? Can planning and zoning and city council say, hey, look, news notice, send a letter out. Okay, business owners, we need you to build a structure around your dumpster.
In short.
Western Waste tells them where they had to put it.
I would need to verify that with the city attorney. My sense is no, the city cannot based on the ordinances that I've read. And again, back to the what we have on the books now, no. In short, we can't tell them that they have to go build an enclosure and put that somewhere. And so that's kind of the conundrum is, you know, how can we build a voluntary consensus? Because we, you know, don't have anything on the books that would absolutely say. And again, you know, I'm not an attorney. I'm never going to act like I'm an attorney. And I could, you know, I'm always run that by him to see, you know, where in our code, is there anything in our code? But something that explicitly says, you know, all commercial businesses must have trash screened from view, something as black and white as that. No, we don't.
I also see that I want to say the new Wingstop or whatever wing place there downtown and also looks like Montgomery Steakhouse, it looks like that's a grease trap tank as well. Is that a correct statement?
It's not a grease trap, but it's a used grease container. You're, you know, you're on the right track. They've got a, so a grease trap is going to be subterranean. It's going to be underground. But that is for used grease to dump.
And then Western Waste picks it up or something?
Generally, it's someone else. It, it, you know, wouldn't be waste management or, or a trash company. Likely they have a, a contract with, or, you know, I know they've got a contract with someone.
Yeah, because I see Montgomery Steakhouse possibly running into an issue, not with the city, but they've got a, their butane tanks got to be filled, their grease trap thing holder needs to be picked up and their trash, these, their big dumpster, and then they have a small can out there. And, and it looks like there's a ditch right there. To me, that looks like something that would be hard to fix. The one out in front of the Cozy Grape, I, I seen that and I, I was like, that's absolutely, that needs to get off of 149. That needs to, that needs to go. I don't like that at all. As just in Knights Inspection, they can move it in behind their white fence. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to see what the, what the city, like, you know, you're going to talk to the attorney and see what we can implement.
In terms of the ones that are in the right of way, like you're mentioning there, like the Steakhouse and the, you know, Knights Inspection Services, those are the ones, you know, to me, that are very obvious that the city can say, that's on our property and that cannot be on our property. Again, it, it comes back to context. Is, you know, right now, the right time to do it? I'm not, you know, one to use, you know, or I don't want to suggest that everything is a COVID excuse. But, you know, to the one at the Cozy Grape, again, it's one of the ones that is on, that's wholly on private property.
Yes.
And it started out about, you know, you know, maybe 50 feet away from there. It was against their building. And they're installing a generator. We had, you know, spoken with them. them. And they're installing a generator, and so it was moved over there to give the contractor room to work. We do not know if it's, you know, planned to stay there permanently or move back, you know, once the generator work is done. We don't know. But again, that's, you know, that's why it's so important to find a way to build a consensus, to get a voluntary participation in it. Because there's not some, there's not an ordinance that says, I can move that because of this piece of paper right here.
Who owns the?
Dave.
Who owns the approval for the community building?
I'm sorry?
With it, the community building? Who owns the?
The city.
City council? Or can you say, City of Montgomery, go build an enclosure around that garbage can and start off a precedence, a precedence for other people in the community? Or who owns the community?
You know, I, you know, something as small as that, you know, to my mind, you know, if, obviously, I would all originate, you know, with the city administrator, with Richard. So, you know, being a, but I don't think that something like that rises to the level of city council.
I, I'm just, I don't know who says what around here, but if it said, if someone's going to set an example, you know, could, could the city set an example and say, hey, we're just wondering if anyone else in the community, of the business community, you know, what do y'all think? But anyways, that's my, that's my take on it.
Yep, absolutely. I, I agree 100%. I think if, you know, if, if our intent is to reach out to businesses about screening, you know, their trash receptacles, you know, ours, you know, should not be, you know, where it's at now and, you know, uncovered. And Allison, I think.
What do other, what do other cities do? I mean, you said that there are times when you pull from other, you know, examples of other cities in terms of ordinances. What do other cities do in this case that would offer the opportunity for an ordinance?
Right.
Without having to reinvent the wheel.
Get the city attorney to look into. This is a, you know, relatively new topic for me. So, it's, it's not one that I've done a lot of research on.
Okay.
But that's a very good point, you know. And likely, that's where to find it is, you know, you know, rather than reinvent the wheel, find somebody who's done it well that you like and, you know, emulate that.
Good point. Yeah. So, you don't get into too much time or expense on it. One thing I'll mention about, a lot of these dumpsters are connected to restaurant business. And maybe that's something, Dave, and if you could work it into even a conversation with an owner, you know, most of us, when we go to a restaurant, if we see a dumpster out there in full view, and it's just, it's not real enticing to go into a food establishment with a dirty old dumpster. So, you know, maybe, it's almost like, again, like these signage and banners, it's for their best interest to improve on that. And maybe that's part of the communication is to say, you know, especially when you're serving food and, and you're in that business. So, again, maybe it's something we can take the steps. And I think setting an example could help with the one that we, that the city has.
Mm-hmm.
Although, that's, that's a separate subject. But any other comments?
I, yes, I do. I have a, a comment. I guess, if we're looking for ways to rectify this going forward, or recommendations to, you know, address it in the future, perhaps maybe adding a requirement for enclosures, you know, dumpster enclosures for future developments in that area would be a good idea, number one. Number two, Dave, I definitely liked your idea of petitioning the MEDC to look into it, to see if they have funding for, you know, compliance, I guess, of, of existing businesses to enclose their dumpsters. And then third, if that, you know, is not a viable option, then perhaps maybe the city can look into that. And I don't, I don't know if they're spending for, you know, providing a tax incentive for businesses to, you know, a one-year tax incentive, that, you know, funds would be available just enough to cover the cost of enclosure. Or even if, you know, they just said, yeah, fine, whatever, and have the city do it for them. You know, those are options to look into in terms of addressing it. The other thing that I would add to this conversation is I don't just think it's dumpsters. I do think that some of the antique buildings downtown, specifically along 149, they're, they have a lot of, their merchandise sitting outside. And I think that sometimes that can take away, especially if you're trying to walk, or push a stroller, or, I don't know, wheelchairs, I'm assuming, probably have difficulty traversing that area. And so I think that that's something that should be looked into as well, preserving walkways, and all of that, along with the aesthetic appeal of addressing dumpsters.
Well, good. I, I think, you know, we, we all agree, it would be, it's a great goal. And I, I think the only thing is, just like Dave mentioned, it's interesting, when you look at the history, it's our generation that kind of expects it. But years ago, it wasn't so. So, we know, we can see and understand why, you know, this has not all been done. Because we have a lot of, you know, pretty, pretty basic stuff here that nobody's changed. And that's fine. But the only thing I'll add to that is, on the materials, if, if and when we do do possibly the one at the community center, I think it would be really great if it was a good quality. You know, I've seen them where it's just like a standard stockade fence kind of thing, and they start to fall apart after a while. So, two things. I, I think if we're going to do it, let's, let's really look at a good design, because that could really catch on. If, if it looks great, people, other businesses might say, yeah, that looks good, I want to do that. So, I think that's important to look at, maybe some unique style to it. And again, if we could get the city involved, that'd be great.
I wonder if you could incorporate signage on it?
No.
That may be an incentive as well.
That's a possibility. Yeah. Well, they, you know, they could get creative with it and design it to fit their business. That might be something. Just put a goat, or put a goat on there.
Or a Texas flag.
Well, again, good discussion, y'all, and lots of good ideas. And, and like Dave says, this is something we can't just hit them over the head, you know, with a hammer. But I think it's something we can certainly set an example and, and maybe start to get the word out as part, again, as part of the comprehensive plan. Okay, so, there is no real action we need to take on that. But if we could keep the ball rolling on that, Dave, maybe next time, if we can get, if you get with the attorney, for any other questions you might have or think of after this about, is there any way to, you know, actually have a, have that enforced right now with what we've got? But even more immediate would be, you know, if we could get, if we get the city to, to do the one at the community center, or at least MEDC, that could be a perfect project for MEDC, too.
Great.
All right, y'all. Well, great, don't hesitate if anybody has any other comments on that. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a, a meeting, an adjourn, a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
All right, we've got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Good meeting. Look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen, for answering all my questions. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I look forward to catching up sometime when we can sit. I, I love to talk about all things zoning and development related. So, look forward to, to get to know you better.
Thank you, sir. Same here.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Dave. Thanks, everybody.